Okay, call to order our special city, special city workshop of June 1st. Second item on the agenda, discussion of possible action on the Guthrie garbage service rates, supply revenue. Leroy?
To start with a recap, of course, on May 4th, we started this series and what we're trying to do is a series of workshops to provide information leading up to our annual city council planning retreat on August 13th. Hopefully, we won't have to spend as much time talking about background information and where we've been, and we can concentrate more time in talking about where we want to go in the future. With that, on May 4th, we made a presentation where we talked about our water distribution system, main and valve replacement, and we talked about the funding that we requested through the congressional community project funding for the next federal budget, which commonly is referred to as earmarking. We submitted five projects, 55 miles of waterline distribution, main and valve replacement, $31.5 billion. Full reconstruction, full death reconstruction of Sooner Road and 19th Street. Youth baseball complex relocated out of the floodplain in Cottonwood Flats, $4.8 million. A new aquatic center in Highland Park, $5 million. And a second FAR EMS station with a FAR training facility, $3.9. I would mention here for everybody's benefit, we're going over all these projects for benefit leading up to the planning retreat, and staff has spent a lot of time working with congressional delegations, regional staff, we're working with the EDA. If individual councilmen are going to call any of these entities, I would recommend a visit with city staff, can't tell you all what to do, but I think if we think in one team, one voice, if you're going to make a call to a senator's office or to the Economic Development Administration, it would be nice if you would think, well, maybe I ought to coordinate with city staff, so we're sending one voice. If you keep that in consideration, I would appreciate it. Of course, Tuesday, May 11th, we had our city council orientation, and then on the 18th, we talked about potential economic development administration grant applications. EDA is getting $3 billion under the American Rescue Fundy. We talked about our first priority being the shovel-ready industrial park. On our, we refer to it as 80 acres, it's actually 77 acres. A state-certified film soundstage is our number two priority with enhancement, and this would be an enhancement to the First Capitol Film Crew Institute that will be at Meridian Tech Guthrie, and they got collaboratively through the city, Meridian, and a chamber, there was a $100,000 grant to plan that and get it started. Airport Business Park is our third priority. We will focus on the first two, but we would like to move forward, as we talked about, to have plans in hand, so that if we get an opportunity to say, hey, we're looking for a project, we can say, hey, we've got one. And then the fourth priority would be business expansion revolving loan fund. Those priorities may change based on applications when we visit with the Economic Development Administration. Their $3 billion may be divided up into different pots and different priorities. It won't just be one pot of $3 billion. So depending, shovel-ready industrial park, under the American Rescue Plan, you may not have to have an industry in hand that says you build it, commit to come there, so we would gear it towards that. Their regular program requires you to have an industry committed to move there. So all of their different pots of money have different requirements, so our shop, things may be reshuffled depending on how they divide the money up and what priorities they put, but we will keep you in the loop. Then tonight, there we go. We're going to talk about the garbage service rate schedule versus our wastewater connection fees. We're going to talk about the convenience center, solid waste disposal rate schedule versus the waste connection, collection, and disposal fees. And then we're going to talk about the youth sports facilities, hotel tax, and other funding opportunities. There won't be any decisions made tonight. These, again, what we're trying to do is put out all the different options for discussion leading up to the August 13th city council planning retreat. At our next meeting on the 15th, we plan to have another workshop, and we're going to do a briefing on our 2021 city bridge safety inspection report and our 11 bridges, if I remember the correct number. Talk about our city water towers and booster stations, our raw water sources, Guthrie Lake, Liberty Lake, and the Cottonwood Creek pump station. On July 6th, another special workshop at 6:00, we're going to talk about the new state statute that's for public safety protection districts where you can levy up to five mils on property within the city limits for police, fire, and EMS. So that people don't get too excited, that would require voting of people with a 60% yes vote, a super majority to pass it, but it would only be on property inside the city limits, it would not include agriculture or industrial property. Then we're going to talk about future traffic control for high-growth corridors and accident-prone intersections. We've been visiting with ODOT, and we're going to do a report on that. On July 20th, will be a workshop talking about wastewater collection system, and then priority equipment needs by department. Then August 3rd will be another special workshop where we do our workshop on our FY22 budget. So that's kind of the way we've laid it out. We can always change if you have different priorities. Just a sidebar editorial comment, we've seen a lot of issues, or talked about a lot, where we have deferred maintenance, and just want to point out that the complications that are created by deferred maintenance, number 10, deferred maintenance compounds at 7% a year. It's kind of like you borrow money from the bank and you don't even pay, you don't pay the principal, you don't even pay the interest. Well, that debt just keeps growing, and that's kind of the way it works with deferred maintenance. And of course, if it's above ground, you can see it, but a lot of our deferred maintenance on water lines and wastewater collection system is underground, so it's not readily known. I won't read all those to you. Another sidebar, and again, this is editorial opinion, but we have limited resources, and I don't think we can put all of our money into day-to-day operations. We can't put it all into deferred maintenance. I think we have to have a balance, and I think these are the six buckets that you would look at when trying to decide how to use our limited resources to move the whole community forward. Of course, the first is our basic core city services, water serve, garbage streets, police, FAR, planning. Again, stay in our lane, do what we do best, when we can't be everything for everybody. Second, stabilization reserves and fund balances. I think in the last four to five years, we've done a good job of that, but we need to make sure we set aside to protect against economic downturns, so that we can shave the peaks and fill the valleys, especially with sales tax way it fluctuates. Number three, deferred maintenance or scheduled maintenance to catch up with some of the repairs that we've deferred over the years. Number four, place making of community development, orderly growth in tourism, investments that would create quality places where people want to visit, live, work, play, and learn in, things like quality education, supporting that, investing in parks, walkability, arts, special events. Number five, economic development, quality job creation, either through expansion of existing business or recruiting of new ones to diversify our economic base and increase our community wealth. And the last one, grant opportunities, setting aside matching funds for future opportunities. If we got a project we want to do and we can get 60 or 80% of it paid by outside dollars, that's a pretty good investment. So I would suggest those are the six areas or six buckets that we would want to try to spread our limited resources to move everybody, everything for, rather than concentrate on just one item. Oops, I went backwards. President Biden, we talked earlier about trying to get earmarked funds for certain projects. We will get a second bite of the apple under the American Jobs Plan. Of course, the first we got through the COVID Act, we got about 800, a little over 800,000, almost 900,000. Under the American Rescue Plan, there has been about 1.9 million that has been set aside for our community based on population and prior budgets. It's estimated that's what we will get. We anticipate we will get half of that this budget year and half of it next year. And it is more restrictive on what you can use it for. One of the items is water utility improvements, so we are looking at suggesting using a lot of that towards the replacement of our water mains and valves. Then the president has the American Jobs Plan and American Family Plan. Under the American Jobs Plan, $115 billions was he proposed for bridges, highways, and roads, $20 million for road safety, $80 million for Amtrak, $111 billion for safe drinking water, upgrade wastewater and stormwater systems, $100 billion in workforce development, $31 billion to create the national network of small business incubator and some other projects. We all know that those numbers will be changed as it goes through the congressional process. I know I saw where the Senate had another proposal, and so until it actually gets through Congress and signed by the president, we won't know the exact numbers, but clearly there's going to be some significant numbers on earmarking. Congress has done theirs, the Senate side has not done their earmarking yet, so we're still waiting to see if we get any of our projects earmarked on the Senate side. If we don't, then the projects that we're looking at, we, again, it's almost a full-time job keeping track of where they're putting all the money. It'll go to different federal agencies, some of it will come to state, spread out to state agencies, so we'll have to be watching the notice of funding availability, so that we don't miss any deadlines to apply for the various grants. And so it's becoming quite cumbersome doing that, but it will be worth it to our community. Now we'll talk about the Guthrie rates for garbage service and compared to what we pay to waste connection. I'd point out that this is oversimplified, it's a little more complex, but I think this gives us a general picture. Would point out, the last time we raised our sanitation rates was in 2006, and at that time, it was a 12% increase. So it's been over 15 years since we did a rate increase on our waste connection fees or garbage fees. Our revenue, if you look at 2011, $1 million, almost 1.2. Our fees to waste connection, $734,000. So our net revenue was 424, or 37% was the margin when you divide that by the gross revenue. Over time, with us leaving our rates the same, $13.24 a month, as the expense that we pay waste connection goes up, our margin goes down. So if you, just for discussion purposes, if you had revenue at a steady 37% margin, and we'd increased our rate at the same percentage that waste connection raised their charge to us, we would have made an additional $152,000 in FY20. And over that time, depending on the perspective and how you want to say it, our lost revenue opportunity was almost $1 million. And so if you look at our rates right now, they've been 1324 since 2006, and waste connection rates have been going up, and that's the percentage, some years ago, zero. Over the last 10 years, they went up 10.6%. If we did the same, then our rates would go up in 2020 to $14.65, or over that time, a 10.65% increase. You compare that to other communities, this is our current rate, 1324 for one time a week pickup, if you're inside the city limits. Crescent is at 1398. If we did do the 10.6% increase, we would be at 1465. And if you look at these communities, we would still be on the low side of what we charge for garbage collection inside the city of Guthrie. You can see even Stillwater's $20 for a weekly pickup. So even with an increase, we're still going to be very competitive. Options for further study and recommendations, city council has a standing finance committee. There's three council members on that. They're appointed through May of 2023, Councilman Long, Batheroyd, and Williams. The other option would be to send this to the citizen rate and fee advisory committee. That committee was created by resolution back in 2010, and its purpose is to meet as needed to discuss rate, fee, and tax adjustments. So this question could be presented to either our finance committee or the citizen rate and fee advisory committee. It's been a couple of years at least since that committee's appointments have been updated, so if we're going to present it to them, we'll need to go through, each council member proposes somebody to serve on the rate committee, and then they have to be approved by majority of city council. We would need to update those appointments if we were going to refer this to them. Talk about one more thing, and then I'll stop for discussion. At our convenience center, which I call transfer station, we have not increased our rates since 2005, so again, 16 years. It's $10 a cubic yard inside, if you have a city water bill, and then it was added $15 for roofing materials back in 2011. Again, this is the revenue stream, this is the expenditures, and I'd point out, these expenditures are what we pay waste connections. It doesn't include our manpower and our equipment costs. So if you look at 2020, our gross revenue was 110, our, what we pay waste connections is $93,000, so we generated $17,000 to pay for the manpower that we have out there and the equipment at the service center.
And that budget, just that budget alone is $164,000, the convenience center?
Okay. Trying to look at comparing it to other cities, and that got complicated, we'll have to spend more time with that, because there were some cities that did not charge anything to take your solid waste out to the convenience center. But then there's others that said, well, no charge for these items, and then for these items, you got to pay, and so trying to put that chart together to show you become quite complicated, so we're going to have to do some more study to lay it out in a way to make sense to compare what other communities charge at their service center. But clearly, if you look at what we charge versus what we pay waste connections, and then you also have to pay for equipment and labor, that facility's not paying its own way. With that, I thought I would stop for discussion and then transition into sports facility, youth sports facilities for the next part of the presentation.
So we've reenacted the rate and fee committee, which would just be reappointing, right?
Correct.
Because they haven't met in, I don't know how many years.
It's been a while. They've not met since I've been here.
Yeah, they could take on both those issues, really.
Correct. And it would be a council decision to which committee they sent that to, to study and come back with a recommendation. Any other questions or comments?
On the convenience center, so if we're adding $164,000 in, as an expenditure in here, then obviously, we are significantly underfunding that.
We're subsidizing that operation, correct. And typically, utilities, you try to operate very similar to a business enterprise, that's why they're enterprise funds, and they should pay their own way. You shouldn't be have to subsidize them from other funding sources, they should pay their own way.
So the current gross revenue for the convenience center is just what people are charged out there, that's not?
Correct.
Communities like Stillwater that was significantly higher, are they one that don't charge, that does not charge for their convenience center?
We will have to do some more study on that, to be honest with you, when I try to look at what other communities did on the service center. It confused me, and I thought if I tried to put a chart together for tonight without doing more study, it would just lead to more confusion. So on that one, we'll try to give you a better chart, but we just need to do some more research on it.
So the expenditure's $164,000?
In addition to what we pay?
How, in addition to the 93?
Correct.
That's not in there.
So it's 200, it's quarter million or more?
Correct.
How is that? I guess we'll get into that.
Correct.
Because salaries can't be that high.
No, it would include fuel, salaries, equipment, those kinds of things, and without actually looking at the budget, I don't have it memorized, but the main point is, that doesn't include all the costs. You do have at least salaries, fuel, equipment, maintenance, those kinds of things in there. And on a given year, that might be more than others.
This year might be more because of the storm damage.
Yeah, or if you built, or if you bought a piece of equipment that year. So we'd have to dig into that a little deeper, but clearly, the cost is more than just what we pay. Waste connections. And again, we're just bringing these things to the city council as background information leading up to our planning retreat, so that you all have information to make some decisions on what your priorities are, where do you want to spend our time. Now, change gears a little bit and talk about the youth softball, baseball complex. Again, we did a master plan, and we own 47 acres by, just off of Highway 33, Academy Road, hospital sits here, Job Corps. There's three existing fields. The plan was to add three new softball fields, with the ideal that if we did the softball complex first, they would be constructed in a way where you could play baseball on those fields until we did the Little League complex. And our goal was to relocate the Little League complex out of the Cottonwood Flats floodplain to this site. The goal is to create, for future operation and maintenance, create an all-sports authority similar to the Edmund, the all-sports authority. And in the past, we've had individual agreements with the different baseball, softball, soccer groups. This would put it all under one umbrella. The entry fees, concession stand sales are to pay for operations and routine field maintenance. Major improvements and significant maintenance would of course fall back on the city, but mowing, routine maintenance would be under the sports authority is the concept. Phase one, again, we talked about repurposing the three existing fields, construct three new ones, new concession stand, asphalt parking lots, and entry road. The budget for that was 5.7 million. And then if you look at, and over a million of it was site prep dirtwork. On fees two, the Little League baseball relocation from Cottonwood Flats, it was looking at construction of six new fields, two each fields for Little League 10 and under, T-ball 8 and under, new concession stand, restroom building, parking lots, entry road, just under $5 million. So total project, if you look at it was, for phase one and two, softball and baseball was $10.5 million. We wanted to at least get this kickstarted, and so we scaled down phase one, the softball field complex, to a $2 million project, so that we thought that would be competitive with a million land and water conservation grant application, and a million of local matching funds coming from the CIP sales tax that was passed several years ago. And if I remember correctly, the state, I'm sorry, the state got roughly $6 million, $5 to $6 million, we got a million of that. So we did quite well on the percentage of state funds they got for land and water conservation. So that scaled-down project did not make any improvements to the three existing fields, but we would construct three new softball fields, install lighting on one of the fields, do a 13 square, 13 under square foot concession restroom building, quick connects for irrigation in each field. We would have rock parking lots with curb and gutter, do, extend water line and take care of sanitary syrup. So it is a scaled-back project, but it does get a start. I would point out that we were notified on March 8th, we got it, but it had to go through a section six, 106 historic preservation. but it had to go through a section six, 106 historic preservation review. After they approved the grants, got to go to the historic preservation office, it's got to go through the archaeological survey, it's got to go to the National Park Service, they got to come out and inspect the site. Then you get the project grant agreement and get started. I look back because I thought, got it, we should be getting started on that project. It was an eight-month process on mineral wells from the time they notified it till when we got the grant agreement.
So we're talking first of the year probably with winter.
Well, we have reached out to the grant administrator and we may get in the next three to four weeks. So maybe a little quicker. But I thought, you know, patience is probably not one of my best virtues. And I wondered why, why don't we have, why don't we start? But if you look back on, on the mineral wells grant, it took a while as well. So next steps, what we would propose at staff is to take the three existing fields and do a budget of each existing field, new fencing, field lighting, backstop dugouts, newly graded outfield and infield with irrigation system and bleachers, and do a budget for each field individually and then come up with some kind of, you've seen some of the presentations we've done lately, T-Mobile, others, do a similar professional presentation and go to some corporations to see if we could not get sponsorship for those three fields. I just randomly picked names out of the hat on who we would go to first, but, so those are hypothetical. We have had a converse, some conversations, but that's what I think is one option we might have to address our three existing softball fields. Chris is going to take charge of that.
D and S. All right, I'll talk to you.
On relocation of the Little League complex out of Cottonwood Flats, back in 2020, as a result of the flood we had in 2019, Department of Congress received $36 million to address damage that occurred as a result of that federal disaster. The lion's share of it will be going to other counties, but there's $7 million that we would be eligible for. We're still waiting, even though they got the money in 2020, for them to come up with the program guidelines and how we could apply for that money. We call them about every three months to ask them if they got the program set up so we can apply. The other, of course, is community project earmarking that we asked for, one of the five projects for earmarking. And when the public works bill goes through Congress, there may be some other funding that we could look at. One of the things that we didn't talk about it last year because of COVID, but we, we thought it would be appropriate now to at least throw this out in the mix of discussion of our hotel occupancy tax. Of course, hotel occupancy taxes are extremely common. They're attractive source of revenue to local governments because the perception is it's paid by outside area, paid a tax, not local residents. It's politically easy because voters don't pay the tax typically. Hotel and travel industry generally oppose hotel occupancy tax increases. It appears that that's placated to some degree if that money's being used for themes that promote heads and beds, people being in motels. Of course, the impact of hotel occupancy taxes on hotel demand can be debated for several meetings probably. But if the demand is inelastic, meaning if the tax goes up, it has the number of rooms occupied don't go down. Again, it's an available topic, but there's numerous studies showing that the demand is indeed price inelastic that this rate has little impact on the occupancy in motels. I would point out though, that that's talking in generalities. There are wide away of, wide array of factors that can influence that impact on specific motels. Like small motels might be more impacted than large hotels. One geographic area may be more impacted by motel tax rate increase than others. So there are some variables, even though generally it's thought that it has very little impact. These are comparable hotel rates by tax rate by community. You follow the highest at 9%. You can see there's a group at 8%. Ardmore Lot and Sands Springs at 7. We're at 4% now. Edmund and Stillwater's at 4%, but it's our understanding Edmund and Stillwater are at least looking at going to 5% currently. So there may be some movement with some of the communities that's in our bracket at 4%. Would point out from sports fields, travel is an integral part of youth sports. Families and friends are willing to make the trip to see young competitors. Always have a fancy term for everything, tournacations. Tournament vacations are a trend. It's just like we see at Lazy E with some of their events. Mom and dad and grandparents, oh, that's their vacation for the year is to come to those kids' events. Same way with baseball and softball, some of them, that's their vacation. Tournaments typically require overnight stay for participants. If you talk to city staff and others that have kids in softball and baseball competitions and some of them play in adult leagues, they can give you details about how much they spend for motels and groceries and restaurants. I just picked one example that I looked online and I just grabbed the first one. In 2008, Hayes, Kansas, if we can do an updated one. But at that time, they were building eight baseball softball fields, four football fields and four soccer fields. An $8 billion investment back at that time. They were planning, they were projecting they would host 38 tournaments a year, seven for soft, youth softball, 16 for adult softball, 12 for youth baseball, two for soccer and one football. They projected over 25,000 visitors for those tournaments with an average of $92.81 per visitor. Of course, you know, you're going to have mom and dad in the same motel and stuff is. But if you average it out per visitor for motels, restaurants, shopping and other activities, that annual impact was about $2.3 million. The tournaments they projected to bring in the most revenue was soccer, youth softball and youth baseball. And when they did a survey, 81% of the survey respondents said a nice new facility would increase their likelihood of attending a scheduled tournament. Everybody likes to go to the nice new shiny places, we all know that. If you look at our motel tax collection history, in 2017 for budget year, our motel tax generated 200, 2,000 if you round it up. In 18, it was 236,000. In 19, it went back down to 209. Impact of the pandemic in FY 20, our revenue was 171,000. About 18,000 less than 2019. Would point out that the pandemic recovery is temporary in nature. It will happen, we will recover. And if you look for the first nine months of 2021, is 133 compared to the first nine months of 2020. So it's up 11,000 or 9%. So it does show that it looks like we're making a recovery. And if you compare March, April and May of 20 versus 21 budget, you can see those three months are significantly up. But I looked at the three-year average and it didn't take 2020, I took 17, 18 and 19. About 215,000 was the three-year average. So if you look at that, we're currently at 4%. 60, 66% goes to tourism promotion, 33% goes to parks, 5% to admin. Currently, none of that 4% goes to sports fields. If you earmarked any increase to sports fields improvements and major maintenance, if you did 5%, the increase was the 5% admin fee would generate $51,000 a year to go to the sports field. And you can see if you did six, seven, eight. Staff's not proposing any particular rate increase. We're just bringing the information to you to give you the information. But if you did an 8%, which is the max, it would generate 200,000 a year for sports field. And over a 10-year period at 5%, it would be 500,000. At 8%, it would be 2 million. And over 15-year, 3 million at 8%. So there'll be a lot of discussion, I'm sure, but this could be another thing that goes to the fee and rate committee to look at and come back with a recommendation. It could go to the finance committee. I'm sure there would be a lot of discussion before decisions made. Another item that would point out that we might want to consider, Guthrie only collects motel tax from hotels and participating bed and breakfasts, but not from Airbnbs. Airbnb corporate will not enter into agreements with small municipalities. They only deal with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We can restructure where we have Oklahoma Tax Commission collect force. And they, it's, they do all hotels, BnBs, Airbnbs within the city limits. It's not an either or, you either do them all through Oklahoma Tax Commission, you don't. The Oklahoma Tax Commission has an agreement with Airbnb to collect lodging tax for host. We would need to modify our ordinance to do that. There would be a half percent fee from the tax commission and we could adjust our 5% administrative fee accordingly to account for that one half percent fee they charge.
Why would we have, I'm, I'm sorry, why would we even continue with administrative fee at that point?
We would still have to do some paperwork, but I mean, we could.
Adjust it.
That could be up for discussion. This is just on the timing of when, if you decide to do this. Currently, these are the city county lodging tax that's being collected by OTC. With that, I'd be glad to answer questions from the city council.
So currently, we don't, the Oklahoma Tax Commission doesn't collect any hotel motel tax?
Correct.
Hotels, motel, not in there?
Correct.
For us?
Yes, I'm sorry, for us.
Yeah.
Question, and the question is the council. Good.
Thank you all.
I think there were a couple individuals in the audience that might want to make a couple of comments on this, is that true? Gary, you want to start? Got five minutes, identify yourself, address.
My name's Gary Good, 323 West Cleveland Avenue here in Guthrie. Hotel motel tax, for me, I'm looking at who's the competitors in the area. And our, our competitors are Edmund and Stillwater, that's our major two competitors. Taking consideration our sales tax differences, Stillwater charges 12.813 tax for a hotel room total. Edmund, 12.25% total tax for a hotel room. Guthrie, 13%. So we're above both of our competitors right now. Even if we go up 1%, we're standing alone. The Lazy E has on their website, we're on there, I represent Guthrie Bed and Breakfast Association. And we are listed, if you go to lazye.com and go on Plan Your Stay, look at the hotel rooms listed, you'll see the hotels that are listed in Guthrie, Bed and Breakfast Association, and then you'll see Edmund. I had two bookings from Lazy E this last year, period. And from what I'm hearing, Edmund is getting those rooms. They, they, I think HC will bring up something along that line with the events that have been lost to Edmund. So my, my concern is, I mean, I love baseball. I think more baseball, less trouble. More kids playing baseball, the better. So I'm all for more fields, I'm all for sports as much as possible. I just would, would hope that when you're discussing this and looking at budgets, that you consider, there's six bed and breakfasts in Guthrie right now. We are called the, Guthrie is called the Oklahoma Bed and Breakfast Capital right now because we claim that. And that's what we have on our website and that's what we say. One of the bed and breakfasts is for sale right now. We're hoping that who buys it will join our association. That's not guaranteed. But if we bump our hotel motel tax up, I think that we will diminish and more the bed and breakfast will just become apartments and you get zero taxes on apartment rentals. So I just think, I would really ask that you, while you're meeting whatever committees, that you consider that if, if we rise above our competitors, then we're really at a disadvantage here in Guthrie with our hospitality, especially with our BnBs and bed and breakfasts. And I will point out that I, I do pay the hotel tax for Airbnb bookings and I do that through CAM every year. And I would hope that all the rest of the association members do that as well. Thank you.
That was my question.
Yes.
How many of those do we have here, do we know?
That's a good question.
The Airbnb?
We don't, we don't have anything to do with that, our association.
I'm just curious, because we're not collecting that.
We don't have a good count.
Yeah, that's a good question, I don't know. I have, I have some that I have listed because I always try to help people find rooms. Like, you know, when we don't have rooms and our, our other association members don't have rooms, I have a few of them that I have phone numbers for, but I don't know all of them.
Now let me ask another thing. On the two rooms that were booked during last year's Lazy E deal, couldn't that be because of COVID? They were restricted to stay on-site pretty much, weren't they?
They, well, that particular event, yes, but they've had a lot of events since then. There was one that we had two rooms booked, we should have had all of our rooms booked because it was a big event. And we got two bookings out of that. I don't know if any of the other BnBs had bookings, you know. So I, I think we're losing bookings to Edmund for Lazy E events and that's, that's a real problem for us.
Do you think those people looked at, you know, I'm just pulling numbers here, say it's 100 bucks, stay in your room for the night? You think those people looked at it and went, oh, Guthrie's a dollar higher than Edmund is, let's go to Edmund?
I don't know the answer to that. All I know is, as a businessman, it doesn't seem like a wise move to raise our rates above our surrounding cities. That's, that's the main thing. I don't know the answer to that though.
Yeah, it's, I could see it, you know, a big percentage or something, but I just wonder if it, if it really had, you know, the quarter of a percent or whatever, is that has that big of a bearing on it or not?
I think a lot might be the new hotels coming up on COBELL and maybe even our hotels.
And if you look at it this way, as, as things move north from Edmund, if we raise our, our percent to whatever and Edmund is below us still, total room cost, because our sales taxes are higher. our sales taxes are higher, then what happens when these other hotels move closer to Guthrie and right on the edge, whether it's Waterloo or whatever, right up to the edge of Logan County? And they take even more of our business. I mean, people that plan trips, and a lot of them are, are planned by people who book, and they, they check on these things.
Maybe I'm the exception, but-
Well, I think we're losing a lot to Airbnb. I mean, I don't stay in a hotel anymore instead of Airbnb.
Well, that's what I'm curious, if, if we looked at that, how much revenue could be gained on-
I believe that if-
Using the OTC to collect.
I don't like them.
I believe that if, if the city would really look at getting a handle on all the Airbnbs that are listed, and it's pretty easy to find, you just have to take the time to do it, and require them to pay hotel motel tax.
I think our best thing is to take all of it to the Oklahoma Tax Commission.
Because they've got to deal with Airbnb, and they're automatically going to collect the hotels running-
They withhold, they withhold sales tax. I don't have to do that with Airbnb. But then, at the end of the, the quarter or whatever, I get with Kim, and I go through my list, which ones of those were Airbnbs, and I've got them all marked. Then I pay taxes on those because they don't, they don't withhold that. So-
And we appreciate that.
Yes, I do. So any other questions for me?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I manage sleeping here in town, which is 414 Heather Road. I'm all in favor with the sports complex. We do need other revenue streams coming into Guthrie. That's the bottom line. Lazy E is dried up pretty fast for us. And like we, I think someone mentioned that the new things are nice and bright and shiny. I'm one of those, which is not new, and it's not bright and shiny anymore. So basically, we do need something like this, and I'm all in favor. But I still, we got a long way to go of how, what that lodging tax is going to be used for, for the sports complex. And is it going to be grandfathered out, or is it just going to stay forever? Where, where do we cap it out? Is it 1%, 4%, 3%? How do we utilize that money? I hear we got all these grants and the stimulus packets or coming through, through the government right now. How do we utilize that money to take care of the sports complex we're looking at right now? Can we get more money to get the economy going?
That's one of the things that's in the discussion. I think what was listed there was potential operating costs that would go to cover that, which aren't going to be recurring, obviously. But there could be a multitude of things. Do you see that the, that there would be, there would be revenue generated by-
Oh, definitely, yeah.
More people coming and staying at your place or-
I hope so.
BnBs or, yeah.
I hope so. You know, I'm looking forward to having something like that, people coming in, families coming in. And I know for a fact, they do travel a lot. I know a lot of families here in Guthrie, they go for sports events, baseball or softball with their kids going out of town. And I know, I helped someone out a couple of weeks ago because they went to Dallas-Fort Worth for their child.
Are you noticing an uptick in rooms this year so far? No?
I would say March, March and April was very good.
That's good.
But May was flat, completely flat.
Wonder why?
Well, you know, like even for graduation, we were up a little bit. But, you know, a concept which I hear from people around Guthrie is, oh, you got to be 100%. There's an event going on at Lazy E. It doesn't work that way. Yeah. Like, there's an event going on this week at Lazy E, battle racing. I think I got three rooms.
I guess my question is, what's the responsibility of the hotels and motels to go out and market to get that business? What are those Edmond hotels doing to market themselves to get that business? Because just being on the Lazy E's website, that's not marketing.
Oh, I know. It's not marketing. Yeah. Beats me what they're doing, you know, and a lot of it does. And Lazy E is very proactive in how much money you give them to start off with, how they want to, you know, in their-
Stay there.
And I got to say one thing.
They're getting some-
Well, well, it's not that, how they're marketing the whole city. I do got to say, you know, where, where we get these events coming in, they want a restaurant to go to eat. They want variety. They want a place at night which is going to stay open where they can have a drink when they finish with their event.
So where is that right at Covell and Edmond? It's not, there's nothing there. There's a hotel there, shiny new, there's a Starbucks.
But how far is it? It's a five-minute drive to Second Street. You got Suna, which is completely open. You don't even have to get on the interstate anymore.
Okay.
My fifth memory is over.
Appreciate your-
Thank you.
So we need to open a bar.
We have, and one more. Chris, you've got, I'll be quick with you. Four minutes.
I'll keep you on schedule, I promise. Chris Evans, 2016 Ori place. Like Larry Roy showed you on the Fort Hayes, Kansas deal, I'll show you my latest deal. We went to Elk City this weekend for a baseball tournament. Our coach said, hey, we got these rooms, well, we went to Elk City, we couldn't get a room in Elk City because all the rooms were booked up. So we had to stay in Clinton. And our baseball coach said, hey, we have a lot, 10 rooms, better call and get booked up right now. And so we did that. The sales tax in Clinton was 5%. They have a city sales tax of 9.5%, we spent 14.5%. My family spent $400 this weekend in between Elk City and Clinton. That counts three trips to Sonic. So that was 400 bucks. We have 12 kids on the team, and they all stayed, obviously stayed the night as well. So there's some, Elk City has outstanding fields. They're two hours away, so they have to do something. But they're all in on their complex. So that's just an example. I'm not saying we have to be Elk City. If we're half of that, I'd be happy with that. But we didn't look at the hotel right before. We said, the coach said, we got hotel rooms at this one, call now, get them booked. It turned out to be 5%.
That's what I was wondering. Did you know what that tax rate was?
I knew to get my bill, itemized bill to look at that, to know that.
Well, that's what I started to say earlier. Normally, when I book one, if I'm using an app or something, you book the room, and it, you know, does what it does. And it was a $100 room, and then your total's 114 or whatever. You go, oh, yeah, there was some tax on it. To me, I never see it or care or think about what it is. And I'm not saying that's, let's just make it as high as it could be either. But I think that's the way a lot of people do it. They book the room and just figure that there's tax involved in the thing.
Our, our hotel room was $96, 9.5% city sales tax, 5% lodging tax.
So, but your spend was about four times what Leroy's projection was on the Kansas deal.
This weekend was 400. Next, this, coming, we're going to Perry, so we're not going to stay the night. So that, but we're still going to eat because the tournament directors know to put two hours in between our ballgames and go eat and go get a sign drink.
But I think what these guys are talking about, when we look at, like when I travel to Austin or Dallas or something, you don't even think about it. You just get your hotel and go.
Correct.
And then taxes through the ceiling in Austin, through the roof.
I think that's majority of people. And that's not everybody, but that's majority, supermajority.
But these, this is small town here. So these rooms, you know, when you got nine or 10 rooms, that's a big effect on your, you know, on revenue. And so I think that if we just went and, without beating a dead horse, go look at all these Airbnbs through the OTC, that may make up the difference. And this conversation might not even be taking place.
Or it doesn't have to be either or.
It doesn't have to be either or. Could be both.
All right. Thank, thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I'm scholarship.
I'm scholarship.
Can you see?
I'm not more looking at-
Quick, you got one minute.
My concern is not increasing in a lot, I have no problem. I have a problem 4%, like 1% or 2% no problem. It's how it's going to be utilized, how it's going to be used. That's mine.
Period.
That's my concern. If we want a grandfathering for 100 years, I don't think that cuts it. If it's a specific item which is going to benefit the sports complex plus the city and the hotels, you know-
You just want it to go towards what it's going for, not just be thrown in.
Yeah, not just thrown in the kitty as a general fund. And, you know, and like Chris just said, he spent that kind of money. But how much was spent on restaurants or, you know, gas? You know, is it worth putting a quarter percent on our regular sales tax? Make a lot more money. Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.